Good morning and welcome to the February 12th, Abraham Lincoln's Birthday Day, Public Forum. And I have just a couple of comments. Thank you all for coming. We have a number of issues we're going to talk about, but I just want to begin a little bit to set the stage for this meeting, which is, as you may know, we're missing one of our councilors. Councilor Semple is trapped in an airline nightmare and hoped to be back today, and instead she's trapped. So she is not here and regrets that deeply and is on a plane, so she can't call in either. And that means that on our agenda, we will not be talking about the winter strategies today because that was her specific request. So if you've come here for that, we'll be rescheduling that to a different meeting time so that Councilor Semple can be here. One other comment I want to thank the folks who have taped red signs to their chests. Thank you for respecting our no-sign rule. It's a longstanding rule in the council meetings not to wave signs, so I appreciate you containing them in that way. Thank you very much for that. And then our first order of business today, we have it marked as ceremonial matters. We have the honor of being able to support a Declaration on Human Rights and Climate Change, and we are pleased to be able to host by phone a Tom Kearns, who is an author of this declaration. And so we are inviting him to just address all of us for a couple of minutes and explain a little bit about how this declaration came about and what it means. So I will turn it over to you, Tom.
Thank you. I appreciate that. If I get going too long, just hold up one or two fingers and tell me how much time I have left. So just to tell you who I am a little bit, I grew up in Eugene. I went to St. Mary's and St. Francis High School and did a lot of fishing and camping and took courses at the U of O and so on. Some of you probably know Brother Pete, who did such an amazing job for the police force as all those years and then 10 years as chief. And you may know also Brother Will, who's a nurse out at River Bend, and Mary Kay, who's a nurse, home healthcare nurse. And maybe our folks, Dr. Tom Kearns started the Eugene Montessori School and started Surny Lane Drug and Alcohol Treatment Center. So I have a lot of affection for Eugene. I read the Register Gard every day. It's my favorite newspaper. Anyhow, how did this thing get started, this declaration? Well, two or three years ago, just before the Paris Climate Talks, some of us looked around the world to see if we could find any declarations or treaties or conventions or anything related to, any instruments at all related to human rights approaches to climate change. And there was nothing, absolutely nothing. So we decided we would draft one. So 13 scholars from seven different countries on five different continents drafted a preliminary declaration so that it would be available in time to circulate in Paris during the climate talks, and it was. And then after that, we circulated it as broadly around the world as we could to scholars, academics, NGOs, indigenous communities, all over the world, in nine different European, African, and Asian languages. And we got a lot of feedback, 100 and some pieces of suggestions and feedback, and very thoughtful stuff, and we were able to incorporate almost all of it in the final declaration. So that's what you have before you today. So just briefly to look at it, if you've got it there in front of you, it's in three, there's the preamble which lays out the groundings for it, the legal and moral and factual groundings for it. And then it's in three sections. Section one is substantive rights, that is, right to health, right to a healthy environment, and so on. Section two is procedural rights, rights to assemble, rights to have information about, rights to, et cetera, et cetera. And then the third section is duties. You don't see duties listed often in human rights documents, but we thought it was important. So it's the duties of all persons, and we're careful to use the word persons because we wanted it to include every kind of entity that is recognized before the law. So that includes corporations and states and trusts and humans, et cetera. All those have duties. When we listed the rights, the substantive and procedural rights in the first two sections, we did not use the word persons. We used humans or living beings because we didn't want to give the impression that corporations or states or trusts have rights of themselves. So that's the main drift of it. It's got fairly substantive chunks of rights for future generations. Many, many human rights documents don't include future generations as worthy of consideration. There's recognition of rights of indigenous communities, recognition of earth rights, rights of nature, and so on. So just let you know that the first, I don't know how many endorsements the thing has right now, I think a couple hundred, but no governments yet, except for Yahats. Yahats is the very first government in the entire world to formally endorse and adopt its part-of-city policy and display it in their city hall. It wasn't a terribly hard sell here, but they were anxious to do it. So Eugene, if you guys take this on, would be the second city, or you could say, the first city of stature to endorse.
We wouldn't say that, Tom.
Oh, okay. But I would. First city over 100,000.
Okay.
And so Eugene could be a model, you know. People don't look to Yahats often to model things, but Eugene could be seen as a model for other cities who might be willing to do something similar.
Okay. Thank you very much. So just a point of clarification, in our agenda, it refers to this as a ceremonial matter, which it is not strictly a ceremonial matter. We are really proposing to council to show support for this declaration and join our esteemed colleagues in Yahats in doing so. So is there a council? Alan, Councilor?
Yeah, Councilor Emily Semple was also a co-sponsor of bringing this declaration to the City Council for support, but unfortunately, she's not here. And this was brought to my attention by Lisa Arkin from beyond Toxics. And after reading it and looking at it and chatting with folks about it, it's a very interesting and unique declaration that connects human rights and climate change that hadn't been done before, as Tom Kearns mentioned. So I thought it was worthy of bringing forward and for support from the City Council. So I will move that the City Council hereby declare its support for the Global Network for Study of Human Rights and the Environment's Declaration on Human Rights and Climate Change.
Second.
Got it. I have Councilor Clark wanting to comment. Anyone else? Councilor Saret? Okay, take it away.
Thank you. Is it Dr. Kearns or is it Mr.? I want to say that with proud respect.
Doctor in academic circles.
All right. Forgive me, sir. I'm a great fan and friend of your brother, so I appreciate your being here and speaking with us this evening. I wish this were a work session item rather than a ceremonial item, which is celebratory in nature, but I have some questions, if you don't mind. I'm in favor of us making statements about our values and our hopes and our aspirations. The problem with the resolution is that it has force of law at least associated with it when it deals with the city. And so I take that sort of thing seriously. I take my own principles about what I would support in a resolution that has the effect of law or something or the color of it. I take that seriously. So I'm sure my colleagues would say I sometimes get buried in the details of this and get very nerd-like in some of the details. That's okay. Could you discuss for me why you would do this without, or with, rather, so many of what I would call positive rights in the framework of the discussion of rights? Why would you include so many positive rights as opposed to negative rights in a document like this?
Gosh, I'm not sure what you mean by positive versus negative rights.
That's the problem I run into every time, too. It's a kind of a nerd thing for me. The International Declaration of Human Rights is a wonderful thing in all of its articles except for '22 through '26, which are positive rights as opposed to negative rights. Our government and our form of government talks about our rights as the government, as things that protect the individual. The government has no right to limit our speech, to infringe on due process. Those are negative rights. Positive rights say that people have a right to something, and my challenge with them is always that they don't come without a cost when you start to discuss positive rights. And the nature of American government is such that it is, each of us are born individually sovereign without a claim on one another for anything. And so the nature of this being filled with positive rights gives me pause. And I now use all my time to sound like a complete nerd, but I want people to have at least some understanding why someone might in good conscience vote no here. And it's that, when I read this, it obligates people to things that I don't believe we should do this easily without a conversation about it that's more serious than this. So I'd be happy to have more of a conversation, but I can't support something that obligates people by color of law without real consideration of what we're doing.
Councilor Saret? Thank you. Well, I think this is a very powerful declaration, and I'll support us adopting this as a resolution, I think, as I read through it. And it's rather lengthy, which is why we haven't read through it for the public. But many of the things that it asserts are things that the city of Eugene has already decided to act upon in our climate recovery plan or in other policies that we have, or they are things that we have said we support, if not through actual policy. So I don't see anything in here that gives me concern about what our obligations would be if we were to adopt this. I think it's very much in keeping with the things we hear from the public on a regular basis of how they would like us to position ourselves as their representative government in terms of our response to climate change. So I thank you, Mr. Kearns, for your work on this and for providing us with this very, like I say, powerful declaration.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from council? All in favor of this resolution? One, two, three, four, five, six. Opposed? Won. And it passes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Dr. Kearns, for joining us and explaining the history of this document.
So Mike's question raised for me a question. What does support mean? Does the city want the thing to be formally endorsed in the city's name? I can do that, or the city, I can send you the link to do that. Does support mean displaying it?
I have that same question, Doctor.
You know, I think that what we are going on record as supporting the content of this declaration, and that we can go on record in any number of forms now, having done that, it doesn't become a force, it's not actually a law. It's simply we are aligning ourselves with it because it aligns with other policies that we have implemented as law.
Yeah. Great.
Alan?
I was remiss in not mentioning that both the Human Rights Commission and the Sustainability Commission both voted to urge us to adopt this declaration. So thank them for that.
Yeah.
Do you have, council, any other clarification?
The motion that you passed this evening was a motion of your support for the declaration. So that is what you've done this evening.
Right. Okay. Thank you. And I think with that, we are ready to go on to the public forum.
Thank you all. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the City Council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward, if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. We have 33 speakers today, and I will ask again that I will call two names and that the second person can go into the waiting chair for their turn so that we can keep moving smoothly through the process. So thank you all. Our first speaker is Sam Hahn, followed by Scott Bartlett.
Good evening, council and mayor. Here tonight to talk to you guys a bit about the quiet zone, as well as address an email I think all of you guys received from Councilor Saret that we had written stating that, in its current state, the Whittaker Community Council does not support the quiet zone that you guys are going to be talking about over the coming weeks. And I just want to be clear, we are not opposed to the idea of the train horn not blowing. We're totally okay with not hearing the horrible, wretched sound that is the train horn. What we aren't okay with is that the potential effects on socio-economic stability in Whittaker are not being thought about by you guys. And I just, I guess, offer some thoughts and opinions on the matter. My guess is that this is what it looks like in a place like Boulder, Colorado, 15 years ago. A city council is posed with situations and decisions very similar to what you guys have going on with the quiet zone here. And when you read the report that you guys received and you ask the city at large to raise their hand if they want the train to stop honking its horn, of course, everybody's going to raise their hand. But it's just not that simple, and I'm counting on all of you guys to realize that it's not that simple. I'm counting on you guys to realize that if you put this through without, in advance, taking measures to protect low-income residents of Eugene, that they're going to be moved out of town. The quiet zone's going to come in, the developments that you guys are all very well aware of that are contingent on this quiet zone coming in are going to have an impact on Whittaker and going to have an impact on the rent there immediately. And furthermore, it'll happen a lot quicker than you guys are going to be able to get a handle on it. I'm happy to see that you guys are starting to have a lot more discussion about low-income housing, about homeless shelters, about missing middle housing. But meanwhile, these developers in this quiet zone has a two-year jump on those discussions, and they have a lot more money. So they're going to get it done a lot quicker than you guys are going to be able to figure out how to protect the residents of Whittaker. And so before you guys go pulling the triggers and spending lots of money on a quiet zone that, by the way, with my short period of time, I'll mention, does have some very serious holes in it. I was on that panel that created the plan that you guys voted on, and there are some serious issues with it, including the fact that I don't think the city at large understands how vulnerable the quiet zone is once it's implemented. So you guys are about to go spend a whole bunch of money on a quiet zone that's at risk of being taken away as soon as one more person gets hit on the tracks in an effort to increase development that is going to screw over poor people. It really comes down to it. And so I hope that you guys are going to be a little bit more deliberate about this choice and other choices in the future regarding development. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Bartlett, followed by Joshua Scov.
Honorable mayor and honorable councillors, my name is Scott Bartlett. I'm in Councilor's Lenka's Ward. I moved here in Eugene in June of 1965. I'm here briefly to basically ask you or to think about, to share just a few random thoughts, I've written nothing down, about the city hall and the status of it. Have you ever stopped to think what in 10 or 15 years your current entire square block will be worth? Because it seems to me that the appraisal that was done in terms of what I perceive to be an unequitable exchange with the county, that it was very cheap if you look at from the vantage point of people not too far down the road. It's a magnificent space that was dedicated for public purposes. I was the chairman of the Lane County Budget Committee and on it for 16 years, from the late '80s periodically through the early '90s and then the decade of the 2000s. And I remember in the late 1980s, here in this room, they wanted to sell where that bank is on Seventh and Oak. And I said at the time, "Why are you selling this for 200 and something thousand?" These lands were dedicated for public purposes. The other thing is, a lot of us don't know exactly what the thinking is or what the fairness or balance is between the cities giving that magnificent entire square block to the county and state courts, basically, for the butterfly lot. It seems like it's apples and oranges. If there are other factors in this exchange, please let us know. If I were King Scott for one day, or an honorary member of your body, I would say, "Forget about this endless delay and trying to undo the Skinner deed. Build the beautiful city council you've designed. You designed it for that place." For $200,000, do you know the kind of design you could get for a world-class plaza in conjunction with a city hall over there? It's time, I think, that we stop this shilly-shawling around. And if you think about what the county really owns now, from across from the Hilton all the way down to the Fifth Street Public Market, that is where they should put their county courthouse. And if Brian Obie can no longer make it feasible to build housing there and somehow wants to substitute a hotel there, then perhaps that will open up. But the county can build on the butterfly lot. And I just submit for your consideration that it's not too late to keep that land and build the beautiful city hall that you've had Raul Broca design in conjunction with a world-class plaza. And I think that is the best course of action for you to think about, and that's what I ask you to do. Think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Scov, followed by David Pichioni.
Good evening. Joshua Scov, Ward 1. Councilors and mayor, thank you as always for your service and for wrestling with tough issues on behalf of the community. Hello to Aria and Jasmine watching at home. Thank you for your public support, also for the International Declaration on Human Rights and Climate Change. I'm here tonight for a different topic. I'm here in my capacity as Board President of Better Eugene Springfield Transportation, or BEST. BEST works for transportation options, safer streets for people on foot and bike and in cars and buses, and livable, walkable neighborhoods. I'd like to deliver a two-part message on ride hailing, also known as transportation network companies, also known as Lyft and Uber. So two parts. One, clear the path, let's get ride hailing back here. And let's create officially some space for ongoing policy discussions on how to make this new transportation mode work best for our community. You hear from many people who oppose or support Lyft and Uber. I would ask you to read that contentiousness in the following way. This is a new transportation mode, or at the very least, an important refinement over something we've had, taxis, and it demands careful scrutiny as it rolls out over time. Now, why have so many jurisdictions around the world, you know, little ones like Denmark, Italy, and London, banned or put huge restrictions on Lyft and Uber? Strong taxi lobbies are part of it. Uber is a ghastly corporate citizen. That doesn't help. But the bigger issue is that communities everywhere are wrestling with how best to integrate this new transportation mode and how to make it part of a full multimodal transportation system, part of an equitable, efficient system with many complementary transportation options. So let's look beyond the current debate and into the more distant future. A few examples that have, for the most part, not surfaced in discussions here but are happening elsewhere. How should these companies be required to share data so it can inform local transportation planning? How should ride hailing companies integrate with or be required to complement our transit system? Will we just let them compete, or will we forge new partnerships? How will we assess the mode's performance over time? How will we assess supposed positive impacts on safety or supposed negative impacts on congestion? And as this mode grows, should we tax it? Also, I keep calling it ride hailing. Why? Well, that's because it isn't necessarily ride sharing. Now, both companies that I mentioned have genuine sharing of hailed rides. Lyft Line and Uber Pool exist as well. That is where the real benefit is in dealing with congestion and providing equitable, low-cost options to people. In short, there's a lot to discuss. Again, my two points, first, let's bring back Lyft and Uber. I'll let you work out the details. That's your job, but please make it easy. And second, let's create that space for ongoing policymaking. We will need it. Other places have shown us that. And again, BEST, Better Eugene Springfield Transportation, is excited to work with council, staff, and the other active, awesome stakeholders like the Technology Association of Oregon on evolving policy frameworks. Thank you.
Thank you. David Pichioni, followed by Jeanette Keim and Leanne Joshua.
Okay, hi. What I came to talk about, I heard secondhand, and I'm not real familiar with, so I'll start with something that came up that I know a little bit about. I support a human declaration of rights, but I would also want it to include other forms of sentient life. I think that the reason why we have human rights is because we see ourselves in others. That is called empathy. We see qualities in others that we have, or qualities that we had or we will have, and because of that, we identify with others and broaden our circle of compassion. Like Einstein said, if we expand the circle of our compassion to include all beings, life will be better. So, I think, yes, this is good, but we need to include all forms of sentient life form. What is sentient life form? Life forms that have nervous systems. I think plants are important, very important. Without them, we wouldn't be able to survive. We would die. We would die very quickly without photosynthesis that they provide. But animals are actually sentient, and they feel pain just like we do, and they feel pleasure, just like we do. So that's what we should protect. What I came to talk about is, I was hoping that you would be able to keep the amount of green space that was in the E-Web Riverfront Master Plan. I think that would be a good idea, and I think that the January 31 sexy glossy presentation by, I think, developmental, development firm out of Portland, Williams and Dame, that showed grass made out of plastic being, replacing real grass is ridiculous, and for you guys to support that, if that is the case, I think it's very pathetic. So, keep the grass green, keep the plants growing, we need the air to breathe, don't replace it with plastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanette Keim and Leanne Joshua, followed by Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton.
I'm Leanne Joshua, I'm in Santa Clara. Jeanette Keim, and I'm in Springfield. So we're here to say thank you to the City Council, because we were here about a year ago, asking for funding and support from the city to bring back a parade to the city of Eugene. And you did it, and we did it, and it was remarkable, and we're here just to give you a little update on how that went and how successful we believe it will be in the future if we get continued support. We'll just alternate.
Okay. So in front of you, you should have, or hopefully you have, this super cool, sexy, colorful handout, and it just sort of highlights some of the statistics from the event, and I'm the parade coordinator. And it showed how many attendees, it was about 5,000 attendees, we had a little over 750 participants in about 35 parade entries, and we certainly want to double that. Want to personally thank Jeff Petrie for his support and sponsorship, E-Park, of the event, and we're asking also for financial support from the city, and at the bottom of the form, you'll see that information.
And both Jeanette and I have been involved with the parade for many, 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 many years, and I want to say that it was kind of like starting over, but this collaboration between the city and old-time parade planners and slug queens did a remarkable job of coordinating with so many of our nonprofits here in town. The parade does so many things, it not only re-stimulates a desire to be with community, but it familiarizes people with a lot of our social service agencies that perhaps they don't know of the existence of, because they show up for the parade. And it also, I can say from a person who teaches play and laughter as my livelihood, it helps us recharge our batteries and do the things we need to do in our everyday lives. And the fact that we were also able to work with Sunday Streets and have a people-powered parade was a remarkable thing.
And so we're partnering again with Sunday Streets, so it's the last Sunday of July, and I think that's the 29th, so really looking forward for a large attendance and support from the city and downtown. It was really nice to see a lot of positive activity happening downtown, it was very family-friendly, and so having that kind of activity in downtown, I think, was very beneficial.
The only, the one downside was that there was the dog ban still in effect at the time, and it did require us to do some major reorganization of the pet parade component, but fortunately, we won't be hindered by that this year. And that is all. So thank you very much, and please continue supporting the parade. It is the one major outdoor activity that brings so many people together, and if we could do 5,000 in year one, we can do 10,000 in year two.
Thank you. Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton, followed by David Hazen.
I'm Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton, I'm in Betty Taylor's Ward. I'm here to bring to your attention, well, first of all, I want to thank you for the expansion of Nightingale Health Sanctuary into a rest stop. That is only a few blocks from my home, and I think it was a great move. And also, anything we can do to streamline the process for siting the rest stops, I support, and I'd like to participate, help in making that happen. I'm also here to bring to your attention a pattern of disruption that I've observed in the point-in-time count. I've worked to resolve the issue directly, in person. I've spoken to our former chief of police when it occurred, and while I was still Commissioner on the Eugene Human Rights Commission. And also, have sent an email to the office of the city manager and the mayor about this topic. But still, we had disruptions this time, and they involved the EPD. So I really don't understand the breakdown in communication, so what I'm asking for is more help from you all, so I've taken it to the forum. I've volunteered several years in a row for the point-in-time count, and this is the second time that this has occurred. And so the timing is the issue, and I think that there's a possibility that there's miscommunication, but also there's just missed opportunity for collaborating. It seems to me like this is an easy one. This is a time and a place when we could be working together as a community to bring services, to bring funding, to support that need with the point-in-time count, that's how it works. It would reduce the work for policing, so why wouldn't we all collaborate? It just stands to reason that we'd have great communication about when the point-in-time count was gonna happen, what happens if camps get disturbed the week before, what happens if there's major police operations that disturb camps the day of, which is what occurred when I showed up to do my survey with Sue Barnhart. We were greeted with tow trucks, with hazmat crew, with several police squads, all there to remove a camp. That could have happened at several points in time, it didn't need to happen on that day. It was a large camp, it takes several, several weeks for a camp to get that big. So the choice of timing was terrible, and the fact that that's happened to me twice is strange, but I think we can do better.
Thank you. David Hazen, followed by Marjorie Smith.
Thank you. My name is David Hazen, I'm in Betty Taylor's Ward, and I'm here to talk about secondary dwelling units on faith community property. I've been inventorying the number of churches and their interests, and I've discovered that there's a lot of undeveloped, unused property that belonged to faith communities. And I did a satellite survey on Google Maps, and there, out of 149 congregations in Eugene, Springfield, there are, I can't spread them all out evenly, and I can send you a link There's 68 that apparently, from a satellite view, I don't know where the property lines are, but apparently have plenty of room for a secondary dwelling unit, or a rest stop, or some other kind of affordable housing development. And we don't know even if any of these churches are motivated to do that, but there is some indication by the fact that of those 68, seven of them already, I mean, there are already seven huts, Conestoga huts, on some of those church properties, just a few, and three tiny homes, which you know is at Church of the Resurrection. And of those 68, 13 of those churches are hosts for the interfaith family shelter. So just some things to consider, to smooth that, the blocks that are now in the way because of zoning and building codes, to prevent churches to do this easily, smoothly.
Thank you. Thank you. Marjorie Smith, followed by Rob Zaco.
Last year, I was pleased, actually delighted, that they thought of me to be asked to serve on the Future Parks Planning Committee. And so I'm just here on behalf of my husband, who died three and a half years ago. My husband, Ed Smith, was a Eugene boy, moved here at 10 with his mother, and went to university high school, graduated from university high school, and graduated from the University of Oregon in landscape architecture. His first year out of school in '62, he worked for the state designing rest areas and interchanges, and was thrilled to be invited to Eugene to be their first full-time landscape architect. Excuse me. He became extremely involved in the parks. It was his avocation, as well as his vacation. As director, he was involved in all of the existing Eugene parks, facilities, and programs, from improving those already developed, overseeing upkeep for aging facilities, planning for growth of the park services in line with the growth of the community and area, and planning to realize new dreams, such as the Ridgeline Trail, which started far into his retirement, and including Mount Pisgah and the Willamette Greenway. He sought out temporary quarters for city departments as they outgrew the 1965 New City Hall, due to the growth of our population, and was awarded what he considered the gem of his career in 1978, construction manager for the Holt Center for the Performing Arts. As he neared his retirement in 1984, he was asked to step into the position of director of the Holt Center, an exciting and to a long and fruitful career. Excuse me. Since Ed has not been with us for over three years, I wish to ask you to recognize that our parks are showing their age, and so am I. Our population and city boundaries have outgrown our park services. They are getting tattered and torn from the love of heavy use. The facilities are no longer located where they can provide residents equal access to favorite activities. Changes in choices of sports and cuts in school funding have made it more expensive and difficult for families to afford participation and organize power.
Thank you.
Please support the bond issue.
Thank you very much. Rob Zaco, followed by Joy Marshall.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Rob Zaco. I live in Ward 3, Allen's Lenka's Ward. I'm an average citizen, I'm a member of Citizens for Sensible Oversight, and I want to talk to you this evening about some ancient history. I want you to imagine it's the year 2000. Jim Torrey is our mayor, Jim Johnson's our city manager, Councillor Taylor, you'll recall because you were there, but everybody else was different. As I recall, Bobby Lee, David Kelly, Gary Reyer, Gary Papé, Pat Farr, Scott Meisner, Nancy Nathanson were on city council. And in the year 2000, in May of that year, about 18 years ago, the voters of Eugene passed a charter amendment to pay all of you, Mayor and Council. I know this history because I was on the Mayor and Council Compensation Advisory Committee with Don Bischoff, who's a registrar, our columnist at the time. It was his idea to come up with the pay, I mean, he pegged it. That discussion created an uproar in our community because it was amendment to the charter. It caused people to wonder about our form of government, a city council that sets policy, the city manager, who's not here, who implements that, and a bunch of organizations were concerned. So the City Club of Eugene, the Eugene Area Chamber of Commerce, and League of Women Voters all independently came to Mayor and Council and said, "We've got to look at our city charter and review it." The council agreed and formed a citizen charter review committee in August of that year of 2000, and that committee met through 2001. They had a charge to look at various provisions in the charter, and one of those was to look at a performance auditor, back in 2000, 2001. In early 2002, 18 years ago, they came up with a bunch of the recommendations to your predecessors and said, "Amend the charter in some minor ways and some major ways." One of those recommendations was for a performance auditor. They had a short, not very wordy proposal, but it had basically two components. It said, "Performance auditor, appointed by Mayor and Council, and overseen by a citizen oversight committee of some sort." The council that time referred all the recommendations to voters on the November 2002 ballot, except for the performance auditor proposal. Most of those recommendations passed, but the voters have never had an opportunity to vote on that proposal from 2000, 2001, 2002. Fast forward to today, most of those people are not here anymore, we can't speak for what they did or didn't do, but you're all here. That proposal's still a good one. Citizens for Sensible Oversight have taken that proposal and strengthened it up. It's basically the same proposal with some more protections in it. You've seen it, you've talked about it. We encourage you to finally, after 16 years, give voters an opportunity to say yes or no, whether that's something they want to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joy Marshall, followed by Ty Prue-Simmerman.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you for your service on the council. I'm Joy Marshall, I live in Ward 2, and I am here to speak tonight about the auditor issue as well, and I have many concerns about the ballot initiative, Measure 20-283, and that has led me to support a better alternative that I understand you are considering referring, and I hope you do refer a better alternative to the voters. I have been involved in Eugene civic life since I moved here in 1990. I've worked very hard for many measures to fund schools, to support our schools, to support after-school programs, healthcare for children, the library, and many more. My point is, is that I try to pay attention and really support our city and step up and volunteer when needed. And so when I first heard that there was to be a city auditor proposal, I was optimistic, until I actually read the ballot measure, and there were many red flags for me, and it was very concerning. And I have plenty on my plate, I didn't really need to get involved in this issue, I have no particular individual interest in it, but I just really felt it was my duty to speak up, it was my conscience to speak up. Also, I want to say that I've, as a citizen and a grassroots activist, I have also collected signatures for ballot measures more than once. You really put your heart and soul into it, and it's hard when people oppose it, but the problems with this measure are so great that I felt I had to speak up. My biggest concern is that this auditor would have almost no oversight or accountability. This just does not work, we have to have checks and balances in government. Just imagine if we have an auditor who is not doing a good job, or doesn't do much work, and we can't find them because they're not even required to live in Oregon on this measure, or maybe an auditor who doesn't share our city values. We really would be stuck with this person, and we'd be sorry, we wouldn't have any recourse, and this is because they would be working without any oversight, any citizen input or accountability. So, that's my main concern. I have a number of other concerns, which I know were brought forth to you at the recent city council meeting that I attended, but they are the fact that it would be, give a very high salary, much higher than the Portland auditor, much higher than the governor of Oregon. It's a very disproportionately high salary and a disproportionately high budget, which is the equivalent of at least five firefighters, and I just use that equivalent to show that we have to make decisions and have priorities, and I think this is a much-too-high budget. Probably what I personally find most troubling and undemocratic is that they could be elected by a minority of voters. There is no provision for a runoff, and I don't know why we would want to do away with that democratic safeguard. As I said, I don't have a dog in this race, except that I want a government that is accountable and works well. I appreciate that you, the Councillors- councilors, have listened to the concerns about the initiative that people have brought forward and are willing to address those concerns and try to fix them. We may have to take flak for doing this, but it's the right thing to do, so I urge you to put forth an alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Ty Prus Zimmerman, followed by James Waddell.
Mayor Viness, Council, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Ty Prus Zimmerman, and I live in Ward 6. And I'm here tonight, speaking in my capacity as vice chair of the Many Rivers Group of the Sierra Club. Our executive committee has endorsed the International Declaration on Human Rights and Climate Change, and on behalf of over 3,000 members of our organization in Lane, Coos, and Douglas Counties, we thank you for supporting the declaration tonight. Climate change is already well-recognized in our community as one of the great existential threats facing our society today, and Eugene has repeatedly committed to fighting it. At the same time, it is vital to recognize that the negative impacts of climate change disproportionately affect marginalized groups and communities. And it is also vital to acknowledge and take responsibility for the fact that so many times in our history, we have left these groups behind when seeking solutions to other problems we have faced. We must vow not to repeat that history, and we must approach the defense of our climate and the fight for social justice as the inextricably linked battles that they are. Adopting this declaration is an important ceremonial statement that carries deep commitment with it. We look forward to the next steps, working with you and with our other friends and allies to pursue climate justice, to protect our planet, our environment, our friends, our neighbors, and our community altogether. Thank you.
Thank you. James Waddell, followed by Eric Groomer.
My name is James Waddell, and I live in Ward 2. I'd like to voice my support for the existing city code for public passenger vehicles. The reason a rideshare company like Uber doesn't operate in Eugene is because their business practices don't reflect the values of our community. Uber doesn't care enough about its drivers to ensure that they're adequately insured. They don't care enough about their passengers to properly background-check their drivers, and they don't care enough about Eugene to adopt our local standards. Uber has conformed to far stricter requirements in other cities, such as fingerprinting and even medical examinations of drivers, yet they aren't even willing to submit to a simple background check in our city. When they operated in Eugene in 2014, they simply ignored the public passenger vehicle code and then refused to cease operations when ordered by the city. In Portland, Uber used software to evade regular laters by denying rides to city officials. More recently, in September, the state of Colorado reprimanded Uber, saying that they had demonstrated their background checks, saying that they had demonstrated that their background checks were inadequate, after finding that Uber had information that should have disqualified many drivers. And yet these drivers, the company allowed them to drive anyway. In some cases, they were unable to determine if the background checks had been performed at all. Even after the company said it had corrected the problem, the state of Colorado found evidence that some of the drivers were still driving for Uber. This was less than six months ago. And even after they claimed that they had fixed the problem, it still seemed to be going on. Knowing this, how can we trust them to perform their own criminal background checks without jeopardizing public safety? If these companies have nothing to hide, then why not allow the city to perform the background checks? It's an affordable and effective system that's been working for professional drivers in Eugene for years. If our community is important enough to rideshare companies, then they'll conform to our local guidelines. I'd like to thank the council for what's been a thoughtful approach on this issue thus far. Let's not lower our standards now. Let's continue to hold these companies accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Groomer, followed by Kathy Sanfilippo.
Council members and mayor, thanks for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Eric Groomer. I live in Ward 7. I'd like to take the opportunity to express my opposition to making more concessions with regards to transportation network companies. James has already been very articulate in his presentation this evening, so I won't belabor the point. Just like to bring your attention, I am an owner-operator with Oregon Taxi, and in some respects, I feel like maybe I'm a member of the Candlemakers Guild opposing the electric light bulb. It's a use of technology that makes sense. I get that. But I want to let you know that our company has gone above and beyond what you require of us. All new drivers actually are submitted to an FBI background check. It's far above what the city requires. All new drivers are required to pass a drug test as well. Transporting citizens in this city, it's a matter of public safety. We take it seriously. We don't feel like that companies like Uber do. The gentleman earlier who was speaking about best, I think, was correct when he said that Uber is a horrible world citizen. I live here. I have a vested interest in providing a good service, a safe service, to the citizens of Eugene. And the other people who work driving taxis, I hope that they feel the same way. I know that many of them do. So please don't make further concessions. We've already been here. Don't lower the standard, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Sanfilippo, followed by Steve Coatsworth.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Viness. And I'm from Betty Taylor's Ward, and I live in the southeast Eugene area. And I know with all the other issues that we've had tonight, this might sound insignificant, but it's actually a real problem in Eugene, and that is the wild turkeys. Actually, they're not wild. They're a species that's invasive. And they have come to be quite a problem in my neighborhood, and I know they're moving further into town because they've outgrown their area. So I'm not exaggerating when I say I've seen more than 40 turkeys on my street at one time, and I've had dozens of turkeys on my roof. And so you can imagine how much damage these turkeys are doing to our property, our landscaping, the feces they leave all over the neighborhood. And I would just like to have some cooperation with the city of Eugene and the council to, for one thing, ask or implement a no-feeding the turkeys, because I do have neighbors that insist on feeding them, and it just encourages them to come down. So I know this sounds insignificant compared to some of the other things we have going on, but I've also lived in areas that did nothing about the deer, or the turkeys, or the cougars, or whatever. And I get that the deer and the cougars, we've moved into their environment, but these turkeys are an invasive species. They don't belong here. And we live in an urban area, and there's just not really a place for where kids and traffic and people have landscaping and so forth, that we don't want to have these animals in the neighborhood. So I'd appreciate any cooperation in that regard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve Coatsworth, followed by Thomas Alberti. Steve Coatsworth? No. Thomas Alberti? Thomas? Do you see him? Oh, there we go. Okay. And after Thomas, we'll have Jim Alderman.
Hi. My name's Thomas Alberti, and I'm in Greg Evans Ward, and I've lived in Eugene for, you know, over 30 years. And I'm an owner-operator with Oregon Taxi, and I have six taxis that are well-maintained and safe. I have safe drivers. I have safe vehicles. I'd like to speak out against changing the rules to allow ridesharing companies free-reign. You know, I just want to, I want you guys to make sure that we have a level playing field. You know, I own six vehicles. I pay $90 per week, per vehicle, for insurance. That's almost $26,000 a year. And, you know, Uber doesn't have to do that, and Uber driver doesn't have to do that, so they can provide their rides for a lower rate without having to, you know, pay the kind of insurance that I have to pay. And it's just not fair. You know, I followed all the rules. You know, all my vehicles are painted, the color they call it now is Oregon Taxi green. You know, the lettering, you know, everything for my vehicle. And an Uber vehicle doesn't have to do that, and it's just not fair. So when you are considering changing the rules, please keep that in mind, and let us have a level playing field for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Alderman, followed by Sharon Trujillo.
Hello. I am Jim Alderman, 44 years old. I'm married to my high school sweetheart, Mandy. We have three daughters. We are a homeowner in Eugene. We are both taxi drivers, and I've been in the cab business for the last seven years. I'm asking you, the city council, not to let Uber operate in the city for 57 million reasons why. Some of them are police criminal background checks. I just went last week and got mine renewed. Insurance coverage, the vehicle markings, price surging rates. So when we have a duck football game here, you're not going to charge little old Dorothy $100 to yank her out of Austin Stadium and run her back to the campus. The Uber system is not a stable company and has already proven itself to be insecure, especially in the handling of the data breach of 57 million peoples in 2016, when Uber was hacked in too. It's not uncommon for major businesses to be hacked into, but you don't pay other people for a year to try to cover up, you know, your screw-ups, throwing your own driver's 50 million, you know, customers' information out the window. If you do allow them here, they should have to follow all the city requirements, just like I do, all the other drivers in this town. Because however you want to look at Uber as a rideshare, as an app system, at the end of the day, you're picking up John Doe, Jane, from point A hauling to point B for a fare. Same thing as a taxi, just a glorified name. So these are some big safety things. You know, like I said, I got three daughters. Two of them are in local colleges here and stuff. They like to stay out late. They like to, you know, make sure they're getting into a marked vehicle. There was an incident here not too long ago up in Portland. Lady ordered Uber, jumped in the wrong vehicle. Granted, nothing wrong happened to this lady, but without the proper markings, it is possible. So I'm asking you guys to do what's right for our city, what's right for our small businesses, because it's going to hurt the local small taxis in this town, and we don't want to put them out of business. We want our businesses that are local here to grow and thrive. That's why we are all here. So with that being said, you guys do the right thing, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sharon Trujillo, followed by John Jelly.
Well, I'm clearly wearing how I feel. And I was here on your first meeting, and I don't like to repeat myself, but I will. I'm a direct result of Uber. I was a professional town car driver for eight years in Southern California, and I loved it. In eight months, I could no longer make a living. I came out here, and I've been here for just over a year, and I've also been driving here. I had to learn everything about this town, including your streets, which were not that easy. But Uber does nothing above board. They cheapen it. They cheapen your rates. They cheapen everything about what they don't even stand for. There are so many horror stories that I can tell you. Just last week, they were given a lawsuit from their own partners that they now had to pay $245 million in stock, although they were being sued for well over $1 billion. There was also an article in New York Times about this particular gentleman, 60 years old, who had been in the driving business for well over 40 years. This was in New York City, and he committed suicide because he could no longer take care of his family. He left a very, 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 I cried because he left this on his Facebook to make a point to people about what this company has done to so many people across the states. This was in New York, which the cabs, the same thing. There was a study between 2013 to 2016, and the amount of lives that have been crushed. They are not welcome in Europe because they don't do what they're supposed to do. Four years, the Spanish taxi drivers took them to court. That's why they're gone, because they're not going to do anything that they're supposed to do by law. There is now a $7 million-plus lawsuit in California, which I am one of, against Uber. Drivers are now suing the company. The sexual harassment claims, it goes on and on and on. And even though that woman wasn't hurt, there was a woman at 3:30 in the morning in Los Angeles who got into a car and was raped, was being raped, and while the police were trying to find the car that she was being raped in, they literally had to break the windows open, and the driver just took off and threw the woman out of the vehicle on the street. Because when those drivers come from any other towns, they just sit here like vultures and wait for a call. It's not just going to be drivers in Eugene. They can come anywhere. All they have to do is turn on their app. And that's what. They're not fair. They cheapened this industry. Thank you.
Thank you. John Jelly? John Jelly? No? No? Okay. Ron Bevert?
I'm Ron Bevert from Ward 2. Counselor Zelenka has said that during his many years on the council, he's only once seen any waste, fraud, and abuse in city government. One obvious explanation for not seeing any waste, fraud, and abuse is that no one has been looking. Counselor Clark sees no need for an auditor because the elected auditor has no role in policymaking and therefore cannot change anything. Proponents of an elected auditor counter that there is a profound value for the taxpayers in having the ability to see what contracts the city enters into and whether any conflicts of interest exist between public officials and city government. Additionally, the benefits to all city departments from auditing result in better government. Departments that gather data but do not examine it to see if their planned outcomes have been attained. Auditors look at data and work with departments to make changes that benefit both city government and the taxpayers. The taxpayers want to know that our tax dollars are being used effectively, wisely, and prudently. Voter perception of Eugene city corruption is increased by the council's decision to put a measure on the ballot opposing an auditor publicly elected and independent of city government control. The zeal of the council majority to oppose having a public representative freely able to look at all city operations and accounts really smells like there's something to hide. The voters are not stupid. The frenzy by city government and their enablers to produce an auditor controlled by council and thus by the city manager is clear and obvious to the public. What does the city government have to hide? Clearly, there is something to hide. The $677 million Eugene city budget for this year is sufficiently large that it is possible to imagine lots of money slipping and sliding into the pockets of those favorably positioned. The taxpayers deserve to have a representative elected by the public and answerable to the public, who is independent of city government and able to examine city operations and report to the public. Statistics show that a city the size of Eugene could lose as much as 5% of the budget to waste and fraud. That is nearly $34 million. Even 1% is nearly $7 million. Opponents of the elected auditor complain about the estimated $677,000 cost of the auditor's office. Auditors produce about $5 of savings for each $1 of cost. Council members have stated that there is no money for an auditor's office and that any spending requires a cut somewhere else in the budget. This is false. There are many staff positions that are funded but left unfilled. This produces funds in the budget the city manager can use as he desires.
Thank you. Sean Ryan Stokes, followed by John Baras. Sean Ryan Stokes, followed by John Borowski.
Hello, my name is Sean Stokes, and I've been a resident and community, or resident and participating member in this community for the past three years. I drive for Oregon Taxi, and I'm here to voice my concerns and qualms about the competing transportation service and cab company that claims they're only a ride-hailing service, Uber and Lyft. Uber and Lyft insinuate that they're only an app that claim that they're just a ride-hailing service and not a taxi cab company, and therefore should not have to abide by the same rules and regulations as local taxi cab companies. I find this perspective biased and untrue. This claim creates an unfair playing field for local competing cab companies. The idea and claim that they are anything else but a taxi cab company is a desperate attempt to bypass and avoid regulations and rules and laws put into place by our council and our community to ensure the safety and well-being of Eugene's consumers and citizens. I believe that Uber and Lyft should have to adhere and participate in every and all regulations and requirements that fellow cab companies abide by and comply with. Uber and Lyft should be held accountable and responsible for their business practices and services in Eugene. One thing that we have to do is we have to go through background checks, and Uber and Lyft don't think that they should have to put their drivers through that, and I think that that's unfair and unsafe. We also have to pay a taxi license permit, which is another rule that they don't want to adhere to. Their insurance coverages should not be adjusted nor reduced or any less than what the cab companies in Eugene should have to be, or the cab companies in Eugene are required to pay. Reducing coverages or policy, it depreciates the value and safety of our customers and our drivers. The reason that our fares and rates are so high are higher than that of Uber and Lyft's is because of the insurance policies that we pay to ensure the safety and the well-being of our customers and our drivers, and they should have to abide by that as well. Uber and Lyft's insurance coverages are significantly lower than that of our cab companies. Their insurance policies are also insured and paid for by the individual drivers of Lyft and Uber and not by Uber or Lyft, meaning that the independent driver's insurance policies are what are supposed to cover the drivers and the customers? Doesn't make much sense to me. Uber and Lyft are not providing or requiring their drivers to render sufficient and adequate insurance policies and coverages. Only indicates the corners that they're willing to cut. In my opinion, it's a blatant disregard for the rules and mandates. They also don't train their drivers. I know that a lot of our drivers have to be trained sufficiently, and I think that's a big issue that we should not overlook when considering Uber and Lyft in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. John Borowski, followed by Eileen Nittler.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. John Borowski, Ward 3. Thank you for your service. I know you have a lot on your plates. You know, just today, it was land use planning, parking, annexation, Uber, parts bonds. You guys have a lot on your plate, and the packets can get really thick. So a lot of times, you outsource some of the heavy lifting to other groups, planning commissions, sustainability commissions, police commissions, so that other community members can look at the issues and delve into them deep and come back with recommendations. The mayor's council, the mayor put up a council to look into an independent auditor. I sat on that committee. I also sit on the Lane County's citizen review of their independent auditor. And we looked at a lot of different, a lot of different models, elected, appointed, ones that are going to the city manager as their point of reference. And we looked at them all and different types of governments. And there were, there were pros and cons to all of them. We weren't asked to come up with a pro and con on each one. But as doing my research and my knowledge of this, I did see pros and cons to different ones. And I feel that in this community, with our form of government, that an independent auditor that is appointed by the city council is probably the best way to go. There's many reasons that we can go through in the minutia of it, but in three minutes, we don't have time. We had several meetings that we went through those, and I've seen it working, this type of a government auditor. So I would, I would put forward to you to give the voters a choice. You know, the citizens put forward a proposal. You guys have the opportunity to put forward a proposal, and then we can vote on it. So in my opinion, I think that there's, there's positive things to both of them, and let the voters decide. So this is another area where some people have given you some input. Hopefully, you'll take it, and I hope you will refer it to the voters so that we can make a choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen Nittler, followed by Lisa Arkin.
Hello, everyone. I'm speaking as the Chair of the 4J School Board, and I wanted to thank you on behalf of the board for your decision earlier tonight to initiate a land use code amendment regarding the Edison Elementary parking. Just thank you. Also, on behalf of voters, I appreciate how many millions of dollars we have just saved on the potential bond. And I can't speak to the specifics of what a TDM would look for, but I want to assure you all that the concept of it is in line of what we would be doing anyway. So we want to promote a walkable, livable Edison community, and I don't know what that's going to look like, but even if it weren't required, I'm confident we would abide by that. So I just look forward to our continued working together, and thank you again.
Thank you. Lisa Arkin, followed by Michael Carrigan.
Thank you, Lisa Arkin, Ward 1. And I really mean it. Thank you. I'm so proud of my city today for passing a declaration on human rights and climate change. I want to thank Councilors Zelenka and Sample for bringing this forward, the motion, and also Counselor Evans for seconding it and also expressing early support for this motion. And the mayor, who wanted to learn about this early on as well and bring it forward on your agenda. And I want to acknowledge Counselor Clark for asking tough questions, and I guarantee you, there's a philosophical discussion to be had over coffee. Let's do it. And Counselor Saret, you said something very important, that this declaration represents hopes and aspirations and dreams for a better world for future generations. And your words were really borne out today, all day long at the state capitol, where over 400 people rallied and lobbied on behalf of the Clean Energy Jobs Bill, and where our own Senator Manning stood up and talked about the need to take action now for future generations. And also, he sends you a message that he hoped you would pass this today. You know, we won't know what the world will bring, and we don't know exactly what all these rights will do, but the future is going to look really different. I think that we know. And I think about the fact that it was merely a blip on news that the city of Cape Town, a huge city, was running out of water for 4 million people in this year. And what's our snowpack doing here in Oregon? We're going to face some challenges, and I hope that this declaration will be a framework to help guide us. It's not legally binding, but it's a framework. What they're going to do in the legislature will be legally binding. But this is a way to think about things. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Carrigan, followed by Misty Frost.
My name is Michael Carrigan and from Ward 7. I want to thank you as well for passing the Declaration of Human Rights and Climate Change. I'm proud that the city of Eugene is once again a nationwide leader advocating for the rights of nature and for those of us who live on the planet to be free from the harm caused by climate change. So thank you very, very much. But today, tonight, I also want to speak for the human rights of the unhoused in our community, to be free from harassment by law enforcement. Cal coordinated, to me and Alliance Lane County, our worker, Cal coordinated the point in time of homeless, the street count for Lane County. We had a great community involvement, 300 volunteers, a wonderful collaboration with the city staff, both of Eugene and Springfield, City Parks, Willamette Lane, the Springfield Police, and of course, Lane County. We thought we had a collaboration with the Eugene Police Department that we, that the, they would not be citing or harassing any of the unhoused the day before and the day of the count. That didn't happen. We had met with an EPD captain who assured us that the city would not, or EPD, would not be issuing any citations, like I said, the day before and the day of. So I was shocked when I got a call from Jennifer Frenzer and Sue Barnhart from the Walmart parking lot that a large number of police were citing and harassing unhoused folks in the Lamont area, and that severely impacted the count and resulted in less people being counted, which means less federal funds coming into our county to pay for affordable housing programs. So I'm making a request. I want assurances from the city and EPD next year that this will not happen again. Thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you. Misty Frost? Misty here? She had to leave? Okay. Robin Bloomgarden. And she will be followed by Wayne Johnson.
Councilors, my name is Robin Bloomgarden. I'm in Chris Pryor's ward. The Eugene Police Auditor is repeatedly cited by proponents of the appointed auditor light measure sponsored by city council as being an example of an effective model. With a budget of $530,000 per year, its whole job is to look at police issues only with no financial component at all. An elected auditor's office would examine our whole city budget from heads of all departments, all contracting, and on down to programs and wasteful redundancies, all financials, and whatever else hasn't seen the light of day for far too long. And then inform taxpayers directly if we really do receive any tangible benefits from all of the above. For just a little more money than the police auditor for an elected auditor and professional auditing staff, I see this as a win-win for the citizens of Eugene. I won't reiterate the huge differences between the fixes-ins auditor light measure and ballot measure 2283 again, but I will ask you all, why are most of you so obtuse about what a real auditor could do to make your jobs easier? From council's actions on this issue alone and your history of helping and rewarding insider friends to accomplish major downtown initiatives without any meaningful input or direction from citizenry, it's obvious that citizens need some fresh, forward-thinking representation on city council. Some examples of these things you've done, the unfairness of MPT, the Keesey Square secret sell-off plot, all taxpayers paying for fiber optic network for only downtown businesses, the urban renewal double-cross last year, tearing down City Hall prematurely and then stashing city employees in Friends renovations at above-market rate guaranteed leases for 10 years, and whether or not they actually use that space that's been rented. I understand the issue of part-time counselors not being paid a living wage or having any staff or offices, but that's another political fight that nobody ever wants to talk about either. With three city counselors up for reelection in May, hopefully, all of your campaigns will become very exciting and soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne Johnson, followed by Ethan Faust.
I'm Wayne Johnson. I'm one year this side of 90, and I suffered a stroke five years ago, so I have to bring a little, some notes. Normally, I wouldn't do this. But what I'd like to recommend is for the independent performance auditor that instead of having one and paying $160,000, now, this is from my years of being in business, when I hired, oh goodness, 30, 40 people, and I built 1,600 apartment units in Eugene, houses, duplexes, commercial buildings. And I couldn't make it work with one person, no more than we could make the city of Eugene work with just one council member. So my suggestion for the independent performance auditors is for you to consider hiring at least four of them, paying them instead of $160,000 a year, probably $35,000 a year. I'd be happy to work for $35,000 a year, give you some of my little bit, a little bit of abilities that I have. And I suggest that they be of different age areas. For example, somebody, one would be in the 40s, one would be in the 50s, one would be in the 60s. And because somebody in the 40s doesn't understand what a person who is one year this side of 90 is, is, oh goodness, my stroke has caused me a bit of a problem, but you understand what I'm saying. It takes people of different ages to understand a person that's 90 years old. A 40-year-old doesn't understand what a 90-year-old problems are in the city. And therefore, again, I would recommend that instead of hiring one person, that we make our job a little more difficult for the city manager maybe, but that you consider hiring possibly four or five, paying them $30,000 a year. I would volunteer to be one of those people. Thank you.
Thank you. Ethan Faust, followed by Brittany Judson.
Good evening. My name is Ethan Faust. I'm in Ward 1, and I've actually heard a lot of really powerful and moving stories about why we should not bring ridesharing back into here. I am here, though, to talk about the other side of that. I'm here representing college students and people that really think that this would be a benefit to our community. I have a couple of reasons why I think that. First of all, business, I believe that college students are, we don't have a lot of money, but if we do have money, we don't want to be spending it on taxis. That seems, when we know that there's a more efficient way of getting around, it doesn't make sense for any of us to be spending way more of that on taxis, and that is limiting us in what we want to do, where we want to go, and where we are spending money in the entire economy of Eugene. I know for a fact that I have a lot of buddies that they don't even know what the Whittaker District is because they've never been down there. They don't have a car. They're not interested in paying for a taxi to get down there. Granted, they could take the bus, but I think that's a different conversation. Secondly, I think that this would be a genuine benefit for both the college students and the local businesses. I think that I've understood tonight that this is a conversation that needs to be ongoing. There's obviously a lot of issues that a lot of people think are going on with Uber and Lyft, but I think that's important to think about the people that are going to be affecting too, as well as the companies. Because these taxi companies, they genuinely are a lot more expensive. Getting from the airport to just back to my home in Eugene is, it's a pretty penny. And I know that if I was able to team up with a couple buddies that were getting in around the same time and get an Uber, that's just a lot easier for all of us, makes a lot more fiscal sense. And I genuinely would encourage you all to reconsider this and bring ridesharing back. Thank you.
Thank you. Brittany Judson? Brittany? Nope. Harley Emery. And Harley will be followed by Zach Mulholland.
Hello, Mayor Vines and City Council. Thank you so much for letting me speak in front of you tonight. My name's Harley Emery. I'm a student at the University of Oregon, but I'm from Springfield originally. And I'm also going to talk a little bit about rideshare. We've heard a lot of different arguments on both sides of the story about the economic and logistical impacts of what rideshare would mean for this community, but I kind of wanted to just paint you all a picture of what the implications of wanted to just paint you all a picture of what the implications are as we don't have ride share right now around the campus and with people in my generation, and specifically those who are attending the University of Oregon. So I don't know how many of you have spent a lot of time driving or walking around the university neighborhoods late at night, specifically on weekend nights, but I think a lot of people probably know what the situation there looks like. On any given night, you are bound to see huge groups of very intoxicated college students, many of whom are underage, many of whom are women, a lot of, many of those people walking alone late at night without knowing how they're going to get home or without having safe, convenient options to get home. And so I think that's a major problem, and I know I've been talking about this ride share issue for a long time now with my classmates and my friends, and I've heard just so many stories of people, specifically young women my age, my classmates, my friends, who have had to walk home numerous times alone at night after the hours of the campus ride share options, and who have been put in really dangerous personal safety situations because of the lack of ride share. I also know a lot of people who have gotten in cars with people who are intoxicated because of this, because no college student is going to wait 50 minutes and spend several meals' worth of money on a taxi to get from point A to B when they could just get in a car, drive a few blocks, even though there's a higher risk of getting in an accident or getting hurt. I also know a lot of women who have had to spend the night in places that they aren't comfortable with, people that they don't know very well, because they don't have a convenient and discreet way of getting out of these situations. And so these are just a few examples of some of the situations that people are getting in on a regular basis because we don't have ride share. And every weekend that we continue to not have ride share options in Eugene, more of my classmates and friends, and probably some of the children of the people in this room, are being put into those situations, which are unfair for them. So that's why I would consider, ask you to consider bringing ride share to Eugene. I know there are a lot of logistical issues and a lot of details to be worked out, but I think it's worth it for the safety of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Zach Mulholland, followed by George Brown.
Mayor, Council, thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Zach Mulholland. I live in Ward 1. I brought a little packet, delivered a few of, hopefully folks can share, read along. Basically, wanted to comment on the proposal for the riverfront development that was just made on the 31st. Wanted to bring your attention to just some concerns that I have. Start with the townhouses right along the riverfront. About 80% of the prime kind of river viewing space is developed, is for 18 townhouses that will go to kind of the richest of the rich in our town. If you keep going, there's some park space that's a park plaza, although it's shown as green space, it's actually 90% concrete. The only other green space on the, in the proposal is actually directly underneath a Four Lane Viaduct, which is not, doesn't sound like a really great green space to me, so there's actually next to no green space outside of the park, whereas the previous proposal had about six acres of green space. If you turn to the fourth page of your packet, 34, on the bottom, you'll see the bottom corner, there's land that was converted to a roundabout that had prior been a pollinator knoll, over half acre of green space that's now gone. If you switch to the next page, basically, it's the old plan. If you start at the bottom, you'll see a pollinator knoll, next to that was urban gardens. If you move further in, there was a proposal for an open mill race area with some wetland area. All of that is gone in the new proposal. If you keep going, there was habitat zones, about six acres. Like I said, in the new proposal, there's only the three acres for the park. All of the habitat zones outside of that are gone. The open space program that was listed in the E-Web Riverfront Master Plan, the, number one, the pollinator knoll and overlook is gone. Number two, the urban agriculture is gone. Number four, the green extensions, wetland, open space are gone. Number five, the adventure play area is gone. So four out of your first five pieces of your open space program are no longer contained in the new proposal. And then the last few pages in there basically cover what's been lost: the mill pond swale, the pollinator knoll overlook, the 8th Avenue and 5th Avenue Greenway extensions, and the community gardens. So what I ask is that you ask the developer to bring you a proposal that has the same amount of habitat zones and open space programs that was in the original master plan, and really hold them accountable for that master plan that had, you know, hundreds of comments and hundreds of hours put into developing it. Some specific ideas, potentially knock out that first row of buildings. If you get rid of those townhouses there and put a part, more extended park space there, that would actually allow you to get river viewing from all of the mixed-use development. You could have about 10 restaurants along that line in mixed-use developments at those two buildings, looking out across a bigger park area directly at the river, and you'd actually have more businesses that would have a riverfront viewing. So thank you so much. I'll be reaching out to have meetings with you individually. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. George Brown, and then our final speaker will be Aaron Baker.
Good evening. My name is George Brown. I live in Ward 1. I'm addressing my comments to the voters who are watching or will watch this webcast, and to the voters that are still left in the room. I'm not going to comment on the many red herrings and factual inaccuracies that were voiced by a previous speaker. I'm talking to the voters. Tonight, very shortly, the mayor and council majority will demonstrate their newly discovered zeal for accountability after a 15-year gap since 2002. They will demonstrate it by interfering in Oregon's democratic citizens initiative process. They will vote to refer a conflicting, much watered-down auditor light proposal to the may election. They're doing so in an attempt to confuse us voters and to draw yes votes away from the genuine article already on the ballot, which is measure 2283. But I'm quite sure that you voters will not be fooled by this desperate scheme and will vote instead to establish a truly independent auditor's office. They are referring the competing measure because they are fearful of an independent auditor, an auditor chosen by us, the electorate. They would much prefer one of their choosing, one who would be under their direct control. They think an independent elected auditor would encroach on their authority, when in fact, ballot measure 2283 establishes a very clear firewall between the duties and authorities of the auditor, and those of the mayor and council on one hand, and those of the city manager on the other. The mayor and council majority do not yet fully understand the benefits an independent electric auditor would bring to them. Benefits like providing unbiased factual financial information free of any political agenda, by greatly enhancing efficient delivery of public services, by detecting fraud and waste, by creating an anonymous whistleblower's hotline, and by tracking and analyzing very complex public expenditures. And needless to say, we voters and citizens will benefit enormously from a truly independent watchdog who guards our public interest. So please vote yes on ballot measure 20283 for an independent elected auditor who works for us. Thank you.
Thank you. And Aaron Baker, our last but not least.
All right. Aaron Baker, Ward 4, Eugene, here today to speak for bringing ride shares to the community or transportation network companies. I just wanted to thank you for letting it get this far and getting the work session set up. I've talked to a lot of cab drivers. I think ultimately, they're scared with the change and the idea that they may lose their job or income with a huge competition. Just some ideas I've kind of thought of, or simply, some of the drivers I spoke to actually don't even have their own car, so therefore, they're just paying the lease. They can't really even afford a car, yet they can afford the lease, 135 bucks or whatnot for the cab. But, so, and ideas, yet the city not to restrict by the age of the vehicle, let the companies actually decide that. That actually may be more affordable for people to be, able to get into it and drive for these larger companies. And the, let, because when you, when you just restrict the age, you're not necessarily deciding the safety of the vehicle. Let the companies decide that, and ultimately, the insurance companies for insurability of these vehicles. Other things, it suggests, don't restrict the number of drivers for the ride shares by the licensing per driver, yet actually a lump sum for the fees. That way, there wouldn't be a restriction on the driver, the amount of drivers, so we would have availability through the online applications. And then just other suggestions, and a lot of the language of the ordinance of taxi cabs and that. Notice there's pretty tight restrictions on the pedal cabs. I just ask that you guys, may I look up, look at that, since you're already getting involved in this? And, you know, I don't even know if the horse thing needs to be in there anymore. So just some ideas for ride shares. Thanks.
Thank you very much, and thank you to everyone who testified, most of whom who have now left the room. But I don't know if there are counselors who wish to respond. Okay, I have Counselor Cyret, and then Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone who came to speak. A lot of you have already left, but I'll still address some of the things that came up in the public comment. I just wanted to point out, as I noted when we adopted the resolution, we didn't read the human rights and climate change resolution, but it does very specifically mention human beings, animals, and living systems as having a right to a secure, healthy, and ecologically sound earth system. So it's not just focused on the rights of human beings. And it also, in addition, affirms the need to respect and include in decision-making indigenous people and other marginalized people. I do appreciate hearing from the folks who came to share their thoughtful concerns about ride hailing in our community, and pointing out some of the serious implications of allowing these companies to operate in our community. I appreciated the one gentleman mentioning a feeling like he was the candle maker opposing the electric light bulb. But I think it's important that we recognize that if we embrace this new way of traveling in our community, it will come at a cost. And when we have our work session on this topic, I plan to speak to that some more and hope that it will inform the council decision, excuse me, discussion. And then, very concerned about what we heard from folks involved in the point-in-time count. The point-in-time count is a mandate from HUD, and the count is led by the county, and it's important data collection effort that informs work at the Human Services Commission, which I serve on. So I would like to see a follow-up on this report from Calc about what happened, and we must ensure that this count is not disrupted in the future, because that could jeopardize our HUD funding, which we need to ensure that we can do the programs that we're trying to do in order to bring people out of homelessness or prevent them from becoming homeless in the first place. So that is very concerning. And then, I wonder if it's time to call for a turkey work session? Because we have been getting a lot of public comment, and the issue of feeding these invasive species, I think, is a real problem. So it's not in my ward, this has not been a complaint I've had in my ward, but it seems like something that the council should take up and look at.
Counselor Pryor.
Yeah, just a couple of things very quickly. I appreciate all the comments that people had this evening. Two things. One, David Hazen had talked about housing at faith locations, and I just wanted to let folks know that one of the task forces that the Housing Policy Board has put together is specifically picking up the issue of shelter and housing at faith locations. It's one of three particular initiatives that we're working on. So that issue has already been taken up, and we're going to have recommendations for specific code improvements and changes so that we can be able to accommodate that more effectively. Then I also, too, was going to mention the notion of a work session on wildlife, turkeys, deer, feral cats, rats, and at the core of many of those is the issue around feeding. And so I do think that needs to be an aspect of the conversation around that.
Right. Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. Who feeds rats?
People with chickens.
People with chickens. Okay. Thanks to everyone who spoke, and as for turkeys not being a huge problem, in my ward they are, or seems that they are, people are very concerned. But the biggest thing I'm concerned with that people talked about tonight is the auditor issue. I think the people who worked so long and so hard and delved into it so thoroughly deserve to have their issue voted on. For the people who say they want a choice, your choice is to vote for it or against it. And you do have a choice, you, further, you have a choice to work against the issue if you don't like it. But to put in a competing issue is, I think, really wrong. I think it's wrong for the council to do that. If we don't like the one that has been proposed and is going to be on the ballot, we could also, we could oppose it, and if it fails, then we could try to help craft another one. But to put two issues, I don't know when this has ever happened, to put two things to, it's, I think it's, will result in defeating the whole thing. And I hope that we will reconsider and not put our own on the ballot. If the, if the citizen, the citizen prepared, the citizen-proposed issue fails, we could work on another one then. If it passes, and there are things that we don't like, or things that we think are wrong, it's very easy for council to put a change on the ballot. We just did that about on an election issue. We don't have to go out and collect 10,000 signatures, we can put it on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, want to lend my voice to the idea of better coordination for our, you know, very short window for our homeless count, to make sure that we're not inadvertently or otherwise doing things that would make that less than accurate. I do also want to say, though, that I take great offense and great, I had a real problem with hearing some folks characterize our police officers as harassing people. They were simply doing their job. Now, when they did it at a time that was probably not well-coordinated there, and we need to be smarter about that, that's absolutely right, but I wouldn't say our officers were harassing people. I thought the, I, too, thought that the gentleman's comment around being a candle maker just before the light bulbs come out was incredibly apt, but interestingly, I think that's true for Uber and Lyft. I have spoken very, very strongly about the idea that we need a level playing field and been very supportive of those in the taxi industry who we have asked a great deal of for a long time, and I've been happy that the councils tried to make sure we maintain a level playing field. But the area of transportation is changing very, very quickly, and I think that even Uber and Lyft are short-term changes as we change even further beyond that. So I, it's one of the reasons I put the amendment into the TSP, or made the motion for the amendment in the TSP around autonomous vehicles, electric vehicles, and studying the infrastructure necessary to do that. The state of Ohio has just passed a thing on what they call smart roads, which is an infrastructure piece that helps with autonomous vehicles and helps with some of the newer technology pieces that are coming. I think we should all get used to the phrase "mobility on demand," because I think that's where tomorrow is, and I think tomorrow is a few years away. It's not distant tomorrow. So I'd like us to think about how we'd have these kind of conversations in a much broader context of technology and transportation area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments? All right. I'm gonna, let's move on and take care of the consent calendar. I'm assuming we're, nothing needs to be pulled from that, it's just minutes in agenda, so do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven? All right, that's great, that passes, thank you. And now we go on to item four, referring to a proposed charter amendment independent performance auditor. We have a motion.
You asking for the motion, Mayor?
I think we should have motion and second, and then if there's any discussion, and then we'll go forward.
All right. I will read the motion as it is my role. I move to adopt a resolution calling a city election on May 15, 2018, for the purpose of referring to the legal electors of the city of Eugene and measure proposing a charter amendment to create an independent performance auditor accountable to the city council.
Second, because it's my job to second.
Oh, jump in.
Okay, discussion?
There.
Okay, Mike, and Counselor Zelenka, take it away.
I want to be real clear about this because there were, my name was brought up a couple of times in testimony about this. I think that the voters having, and the general public having as much information as possible is awesome. I think that's exactly what we ought to do. My challenge with the auditor was that, yes, I said they're not empowered to do anything, and that's true. They're empowered to give voters more information, more detailed information about what they already know. My point, which maybe I didn't make very well, was then what happens? Having information is one thing, but doing something about it is something else. We, for a very long time in our community, had fleets of cars, all powered by gasoline, and I would need to study it more specifically, but I would be willing to bet that we have spent more money recently, a great deal more money, less efficiently, if you're looking at it that way, on electric vehicles and on some of the things that we are doing to limit carbon emissions with our city fleet. So in that example, you have the idea of efficiency and expenditure in conflict with the values of the majority, and that gets solved at the council table by a choice of policy overall. My concern is that an auditor is going to inevitably create more conflicts around policy that the council creates, and if they're, if they are issues around fundamental operation of the city, the council is the body that has to make a decision, should we do something about that or just let the information be there? And I would hate to see council adopt the role of micromanaging the city administration because that's what we would be asked to do if we're changing the way that, or we would be constantly asking for the manager to explain why the city is administered in particular ways that we may or may not have as much detail. That concerns me. So I won't support the idea of even more because I don't believe the auditor as a function is helpful to the city government, so.
Okay. Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, there were two ideas that the Citizens for Sensible Oversight had suggested that they wanted in the language of what we vote on today. One was that in the preamble to the resolution, that if you have the motion in front of you, it's a substitute motion, it's the new letter C, which talks about the why of having an auditor, and the association of local government auditors is a cornerstone of good public sector governance, and such governance includes the process, includes the processes and public entity utilizes to create and achieve goals. Auditing is one way to provide unbiased, objective assessments of how effectively and efficiently governmental entity is achieving these goals. That's, I wanted to put that in as context of why you do an auditor. And the substantive change is new letter D on the resolution, which calls for the auditor to, oh, I'm sorry, that one also has information about the why. The substantive change is in the actual charter amendment language, and that is the new section D, which requires that the independent auditor be subject to peer review in accordance with generally accepted government accounting standards, which is the same provision that's in the initiative petition. So those two are on par with each other in that regard. So with that, I would move to substitute the motion in front of you for the one that's on the table.
Second. Okay, discussion on the amended motion? Okay, in, all in favor of the motion?
Substituting, yeah.
Of the, wait, all in favor of the substitution? That's what we have to do first. All in favor of the substituted motion? One, two, three, four, five? Okay, opposed? Two. Okay, so the substitution passes. I still have Counselor Pryor to speak to the original, so Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. I wanted to have a chance to weigh in because I wasn't able to participate in the previous conversation, so I wanted to kind of give a little bit of what my perspective is and where I am. And I probably should preface by saying, this is absolutely not the way I would have done this. If we, if we want to have an audit function, and I've been a believer in audit function since I was on the school board and we had audits, and I think auditing is a great idea. So that first, you know, bridge, yes, I do think auditing can be very valuable, and I think audit can provide a very useful function. We already do a lot of audits, and we already do audits that conform to the Yellow Book. So I think having the additional aspects of performance auditing as a way of providing information and helping to improve, I think, is a valuable thing to do. But I wouldn't have done it this way because I feel like the auditing that we're talking about having become incorporated into the city is all being done to us, not with us. I would prefer to be a participant in how we create whatever audit function should be, but unfortunately, that's not the way it's working. So now I have to look at the proposals that have come to us, and ultimately, I think you have to let the public decide. That's, that's what democracy is all about. You take it to the public and say, I'm not going to restrict you, you do it. If I went into a grocery store and I go to the cereal island, there's only one brand of cereal? And I say, well, do I get a choice? Is there like others cereal? No, no, this is good cereal. It's the only cereal you need. You either buy this cereal or you don't need cereal. I say, well, I'd like to have a choice of cereal here. Why can't I have more than one? And I think the public is smart enough to be able to have a choice on the shelf, and that's really all I'm saying. So whether I favor this option or that option, and that will certainly be something we'll talk a lot about between now and May, but all I'm saying is, for me, I'm not making the decision of whether or not we're going to have an auditor, and I'm not making the decision of which one of these options is going to be chosen. I'm saying I'm going to trust the public to decide which brand of cereal they want to buy. And in that case, I will support putting this on there because I'm not deciding this is the system. I'm simply saying I'm giving the voters the opportunity to make a choice.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, ready for a vote? All in favor?
Just so, just so everybody is clear, what you are voting on is the motion with the substitute attachment that includes the, what is entitled, and I think is in front of all of you, is the resolution entitled Zelenka-intended motion, and the attachment to the resolution, that ballot measure, also with the title, Zelenka. So that is what you voted to substitute in, and that's what you're voting to refer with this motion.
Right.
Correct.
I want to make sure everybody's. Correct, we approved that, and, okay, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five? Opposed? One, two, so that passes. Thank you very much. And now we go on to, our next item is the Parks and Recreation Operating Levy and Capital Bond Resolutions, and it's like we have a staff presentation.
Yes, just a, just a few words. My name is Carolyn Burke, and I am the project manager for the Parks and Recreation System Plan. And tonight, the council is asked to take action on potential funding measures for parks and recreation. Those funding measures, if approved by council, would be referred to Eugene voters on the May 15, 2018 ballot. Under consideration are a five-year option levy that would fund the existing gap in operations and maintenance funding, addressing park safety and security, illicit activity response, general park maintenance, natural area maintenance, and allow for maintenance of future park and recreation facilities. Also under consideration is a capital bond that would provide funding for priority improvements such as park renovations, trail and habitat restoration, safety improvements, infrastructure improvements, matching funds for school district partnerships, community center pool and field renovations and improvements, and new park development in underserved neighborhoods. As directed by council at the January 24 work session, we have brought back two different options for funding both operations and maintenance and capital improvements. Option A consists of a $3.12 million five-year option levy to fund operations and maintenance activities, and a $31.1 million general obligation bond to fund capital improvements. The combined cost for the average homeowner would be $87 per year, or $7.30 per month. Option B includes the cost of renovating Sheldon Pool and consists of a $3.15 million five-year option levy to fund operations and maintenance activities, and a $39.35 million general obligation fund to fund capital improvements. The combined cost for the average homeowner would be $99 a year, or $8.30 per month. This is the final opportunity to take action to place these measures on the May 2018 ballot, and we are available for questions.
Okay. Yes, I would like you to make the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I will do exactly that. I move to adopt a resolution placing a $3.15 million five-year local option measure on the May 15, 2018 ballot to fund operations and maintenance of parks, trails, natural areas, rivers, and recreation facilities consistent with the resolution in attachment B. Second.
Beat you to it. All right, I have Counselor Clark to speak to it first. Anybody else?
Thank you, Mayor. It is my role as council president to read and choose and make the motion, but I will vote no on the, on the, on the motion. The challenge that I have is this, we have a library levy that we've put in place, we're now going to go to the voters again and say we can't afford to do all the things we'd like to do with parks and recreation, so we're going to ask for both a levy and a bond to do that. And I'm fairly certain that come later in the year, we're going to have a conversation around public safety that'll ask for a similar thing. School district's going to do something else. We're massively increasing transportation SDCs. I don't know what parks' SDCs will be as of yet, but my guess is they'll be higher. We're thinking about increasing the cost of new homes with a, with a construction excise tax. We're increasing the cost of living for each homeowner substantially every time we turn around here, and we're wondering why we have a housing crisis because it's expensive to live here. That's one, that's reason number one. Reason number two is, we are, I hope sometime this year, going to make some decisions about City Hall, which involves spending a great deal of money, at the same, no matter what we decide to do. And we're going to have to do that with the backdrop of having said multiple times for multiple programs, we don't have enough money in the budget we have to do the things we'd like to do. And I don't find those things consistent, and that we are going to act in those ways. So I cannot support this as the best way for us to move forward, even though I absolutely agree that parks and recreation are a huge value to so many in our community. Thank you.
Counselor Cyret.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I'm glad, even though you won't support the measure, I'm glad you put option B out as the one you chose. That's the one, that's a slightly higher amount, but will help us start the work at Sheldon Pool, which, looking at the map of projects, seems to have been an area that was lacking. So, you know, I see this as an opportunity to ask our community, if you want to, if we want to tax ourselves a little bit more in order to achieve some long-needed work in our parks, including work that will have a positive impact on public safety. And I'm really feeling a pent-up desire to get this work done in our community. And while we each have to individually weigh whether we want to pass this tax, and then if there's one that's going to be on a future ballot, whether we're going to embrace that one, those are choices we need to make as individual voters. I think it's important for us as a city council to be responsive to what we're hearing in the community, and I am hearing from people that they want this to go to the ballot and to have a discussion about whether or not to pass these, this levy and this bond. So I, I think the public is ready to be asked this question. We've got a very responsive list of specific items that would be funded with these measures, so we are making a promise on how the money will be used, and as we did with our road bond, we are making a promise to be very transparent about how those projects are realized as if, if the bond and levy were to pass. So I'm eager to vote yes to refer both of these things to the ballot. We haven't made the second motion yet, but the one, the other, one that will come.
Thank you. Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, I think this is very similar to the, the road bonds, which is put out a very specific list of things that we are going to do and then do them. And we've done that three times with the, with the road bond, and with very excellent success in the 60-plus range in terms of yes voters. So this, again, very specific project list, benefits around the city, and a modest operating levy. I'm also supportive of the option two, which adds Sheldon Pool, and that adds an additional dollar per month, but to the typical household. And I think that's worth it because if this were not in this bond, it would be another probably decade or more before Sheldon Pool got into that, and Sheldon Pool is desperate in need of that. And I think that, that adding Sheldon Pool adds supporters and adds a very crucial asset that is very much in demand, which is pools. And having Sheldon Pool be refurbished will be a real asset to the city.
All right, thank you. Counselor Evans.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, we have, we're paying the price now for years of deferred maintenance, for kicking the can down the road and telling voters and telling our residents that, you know, we can, we can get by now, we can get by for another two or three years, we'll get by for another four or five years. And now back's against the wall. So Sheldon Pool and Echo Hollow Pool are in dire straits in terms of their infrastructure. We don't have the capacity to be able to support the park and recreation needs that this community has right now with a growing population. We've got facilities that are 40, 50, 60 years old. When I was on the fair board several years ago, the condition of the fairgrounds and the facilities of the fairgrounds then, as well as now, is not in the greatest of shape. And that facility was constructed around, beginning around in the 1930s and added the exhibition hall in the 1970s. That's a long time ago. And we're in the same shape right now with the city's assets. We need to have operation and maintenance money. There's no question about that. There's a certain level of service that people get used to and demand in this city, and now there are people who are used to or demanding more service because we have more people. This is no longer a 30,000 resident. This is no longer a 30,000 resident community anymore. We have 170,000-plus residents, plus other people who come from other parts of our community that use those resources. I don't need to tell you that the SwimTina Junction City uses Echo Hollow Pool. And we have other folks that use more of our resources here locally. They pay for it, but it's not nearly enough. And so we need to invest, and we want to, I think we need to give the voters of this community an opportunity to invest in a operating levy, a maintenance levy, and invest in our capital assets on the capital side with a bond.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Taylor, and then Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. I will support this. The people who have, who vote will have a choice of whether to vote for it or not. I'm surprised that some of you want the choices, don't want to put another parks thing on, a different one to give them a choice, but I'm glad we're only putting one. Thank you.
Counselor Pryor.
Just, I will completely agree with Counselor Taylor. Just as I said in the last discussion, let the voters decide. Give them the choice rather than assume what they do or don't support. Let them tell me what they do or don't support.
Okay, so our, so we are now ready to vote on the first of these measures, option B. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. Opposed? One. Okay, thank you. That passes. So now the next, uh, next motion?
Sorry, ma'am, I'd like to jump off here, and that's being behind. Sorry. All right. Which will be, yeah, the, "I move to adopt a resolution placing a 39.35 million general obligation bond measure on the May 15, 2018 ballot to fund parks and recreation projects consistent with the resolution in attachment B."
Second. Okay, any further discussion on this? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. Opposed? One. So that passes. Thank you very much. Okay.
Next motion I have is that I move to prepare a neutral information tabloid for the local option levy and general obligation bond measures, and request that the city manager include the cost for the tabloid on the supplemental budget in June.
Second. Any discussion of this? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. None opposed. That passes. Thank you. Okay. All right, now item six. Item six is approval of motions relating to the May 15, 2018 election.
All right. I move to direct the city manager to include a supplemental budget sufficient appropriation --
No, we do that.
Excuse me?
Oh, we, sorry. Carry on.
I want to start again because I think I read that incorrectly. "I move to direct the city manager to include on a supplemental budget sufficient appropriation offset by general fund contingency and reserve for revenue shortfall to produce that voter's pamphlet."
Second. Any discussion of this? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So that passes. Thank you very much. Okay. So I just, our next order of business is councilors agreeing to serve on, to write the endorsement statements in the voter's pamphlet, and I have discussed this, so we're going to plug your names in here, and if you change your mind, you have a chance to say no. Okay.
I'm going to volunteer for a third position on the first thing.
Okay, so I have two volunteers for each of these, Counselor Cyret and Counselor Pryor on the first one. So you have to read the motion, right?
Mike, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask for a third person to volunteer.
Oh, I have two volunteers. Thank you.
Yes.
I have two volunteers for the first, the voter's pamphlet statement on the performance auditor. I have Counselor Cyret and Counselor Pryor. Is there a third counselor that wishes to be part of that team? It's not essential, but if --
In that case, I move to appoint Councilors Cyret and Counselors Pryor to the voter's pamphlet proponent committee for the charter amendment to create a council-appointed independent performance auditor.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? One, two, three, four. Opposed? Oh, did I get you? I don't think I got you. Five. Did you raise your hand?
Six.
Sorry. So I got all six. Okay, good. Thank you. All right, and this, the next round on the parks and, oh, wait. What, what are you saying to me?
We want to find out if we want third, if someone wants to volunteer.
Yes, I'm just getting there. I'm just getting there. So on the parks and rec bonds, my assumption has been that the same team can write both the levy and the bond. I have volunteers, Counselor Zelenka and Counselor Evans, and there's a third slot if somebody wants to join that project. And seeing none, let's go with those two.
In that case.
Use your brain.
I move to appoint --
Counselor Yeh is volunteering.
Are you?
I just volunteered. Maybe I volunteered.
Trying to lose my voice. I can if you need help.
Okay.
I'm willing to --
Well, in that case, in that case, I move to appoint Councilors Yeh, Evans, and Zelenka to the voter's pamphlet proponent committee for operations and maintenance levy to maintain parks, trails, natural areas, rivers, and recreation facilities.
Second. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Excellent.
And I would also then move to appoint the same councilors just previously named to the voter's pamphlet proponent committee for a general obligation bond measure package to fund parks and recreation projects.
All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. Are you raising your hand?
Yes, please. My name wasn't in that list.
Thank you. Thank you. So we, I believe, have now done all of the business of the night, correct?
Yeah, just to make sure that people know that we'll be rescheduling the work session on winter strategies. Of course, Counselor Simple, that was her work session, so we'd like to have her present when we do that.
Right. Thank you all very much. And we are adjourned.